Okay, the meeting is called back to order at 6:39 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can I please have a motion in a second that the agenda of November 7th, 2023 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Board members' questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay. Student rep. Helen, you're up.
Um, hi. Um, we have a very exciting, in my opinion, report today. For district red updates, I'm sure you all are aware that this week is a four-day week to celebrate Veterans Day. And for PHS, yesterday was the NHS Fall Induction Ceremony. The girls volleyball and gymnastics teams continue to impress. Sources of Strength is holding a Thanksgiving food drive. And the Model United Nations participated in the Hilton Conference and had six wins. Currently, tickets are on sale for San Marino Flowers, the upcoming fall play. And more than 20 students have been selected for the NISMA Area All-State Festival. For Bay Trail, Mr. Eccleston was slimed. The sixth graders turned in the most tickets for Well Done Wednesday and chose the House Day principal to get green and gooey. A Veterans Day donation drive will be happening until Thursday. And Adopt a Snowman starts next Wednesday, the 15th. For Scribner, yesterday they had author Lisa Wheeler of Dino Sports and the Dino Holiday Series visit students, and she presented. And next week, the first graders will go on a field trip to the planetarium. At Cobble's, the PTA is hosting the Scholastic Book Fair. It was today. And at Indian Landing, the Partners Pride assemblies are being held. This year, brief lessons about the school's history will be presented in anticipation of the school's 75th anniversary this spring. And at Harris Hill, fifth graders had a blast during a recent visit to the Challenger Learning Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members' questions or comments?
I have one question.
Sure.
Helen, could you expand on Adopt a Snowman?
So, from what I remember...
Okay.
Is that you go and sign up for little paper slips, right? And they sort of get like hung on this little tree that's sort of in the main lobby. And by getting a paper slip, you're essentially signing up to bring, I think it's mittens, hats, scarves...
Ah.
...to be donated to people in need.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Okay, superintendent reports?
I can't do, I can't do what Helen did. That was a great presentation. Thank you. I just have a few student staff honors, a building emergency response plan, which the board has to act on. And then I'll turn over to Dr. Driffl for some business updates. Believe it or not, we're going to start talking tonight about building the budget for the 24-25 school year. So just congratulations to high school students who've been selected to participate in the prestigious 2023-2024 Hockstein Youth Symphony Orchestra. Our students there are listed in the agenda and look very excited for that opportunity. Co-teachers of the year, congratulations to Penfield High School teachers Chrissy French, an anal teacher, English, or English language learner teacher, and John Hoffman, our English teacher, who have been selected as winners of the New York State Award for Co-teaching Pair of the Year. And they were recognized at a conference in Albany on November 3rd. And I love that photo. See the depth, you know? It's very, it's very good. But absolutely, again, continuing to build our English language learner programs and co-teaching with, in this case, an English teacher. So congratulations to both of them. And also congratulations to our very own Director of Communications, Nancy Bradstreet, who likes to hide behind the camera because she's always here, you just don't always see her, being named the winner of an award in photography category at the New York State Public Relations Association's Annual Communication Contest. The photo of a PHS student working across the high ropes course was selected for recognition of the more than 490 contest entries submitted this year. And Nancy is not, this is not her first time at this rodeo. Many of her photographs over the years have been, have been winners. And thank you very much for all that you do, Nancy. And no, I will never be up on that high ropes course. As Helen mentioned, was it yesterday morning was the NHS induction? And we had five students here who were honored into National Honor Society. And this is, we do one in the spring, and then students have an opportunity to resubmit, and that's why this one's smaller. And then in the spring, you have a larger induction into National Honor Society. But congratulations. Very excited to talk about our Golden Apple Award. So congratulations to Indian Landing third grade teacher Jessie Nima on being named the winner of the Golden Apple Award from News 8 for being a great teacher. Way to go. Absolutely brings just a wonderful culture to the classroom. And I love when, again, the golden apples are, they're nominated by typically students or students with their parent and submitted right to News Channel 8. So we don't know about it until News Channel 8 calls Nancy Bradstreet to say, we're going to come over with the Golden Apple. So just really great congratulations. I'll shift to building emergency response plans for the board and the community. This is something that we do every year. We're required by New York State. And so we're required to submit both district and building response plans. Every district in New York State is required to submit updated district and building-specific emergency response plans on an annual basis. The board must approve plans in regular session. The board adopted the district-wide emergency response plan back on July 11th. And the building-specific emergency response plans are updated in partnership with our building principals and school-based teams, as well as local law enforcement. The building emergency response plans were submitted to New York State on the deadline of October 4th. We submit them, and sometimes they might kick it back and ask a question. And then we wait for approval from the state before we come to the board for approval. Otherwise, if you approve at the same time, you might have to go back and approve again. So this is, in all reality, sometimes we talk about rubber stamping. This is a little bit of a rubber stamp. The state's already approved them, but by law, the boards also have to approve the plans. And just as a reminder, the building emergency response teams and staff directories have all been updated. When we have new staff, new principals, and new people on the committees, we need to update that. The building emergency response plans have been submitted, as I mentioned, back on October 4th. We've also provided copies of the building emergency response plans to local law enforcement, Monroe County Sheriff's Office, and Brighton Police. And then the final requirement of this annual process is that the board adopts those building emergency response plans. I just can't say enough about the partnership we do have with local law enforcement. Both Monroe County Sheriff's and Brighton Police work very closely with us to ensure that our building response plans for emergencies are also supported and approved by local law enforcement. They really bring a lot of knowledge and have been very helpful in this process. A lot of this work, of course, is Brandon Fox, who typically is here with us, but is at a conference right now, actually in Quantico, which is, I'm a little jealous. So, yeah, but that's really, he was selected to go. Not everybody is, but because of the work he does around building security and school safety, he really is well-known across the county. And we're lucky to have Mr. Fox here with us. That's all I have, unless the board has any questions.
Board members' questions, comments? Catherine?
So you submit these plans to the state. What do they do with them? Just file them away? Or do they actually look them over? And do they ever give suggestions? I mean, if everything is coming from every district in this, you know, it seems...
So they do review them, because I do know in some cases where they might be kicked back again. So what happens with everything we do is it's submitted through a portal. And then you get an email back that says, you know, so first you get an email that says it was submitted successfully. And then you either get another email that says it was approved, or that it has been turned back over to you. And then there's some notes that you need to go in and fix. I can't think of a time that this was kicked back to us, but I know it happens in many places. Sometimes it's really more of like, a name wasn't filled in, or a contact information wasn't there, or a step wasn't completed before it was submitted.
Okay.
So they do, they are reviewed, but it is a little bureaucratic as well, I think, that they just want to make sure we're doing it. And how do you make sure you require districts to fill it in and send it in?
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's proof that every district did it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So actually, I have similar questions, just slightly different direction. You know, we, you've mentioned, you know, as we have in the past with, with the building and the district plans, we partner with the, with the county and then, and Brighton, et cetera. Now, the important thing is having these plans, it's not just for us to follow, but make sure that they follow them when the situation arises. Do we know how they manage? Because it's not just our plans, they have, I mean, they've got plans from plenty of other districts, school districts, and maybe governmental organizations. Do we know, how do, how do they manage those plans so if we have something happen, they know what to do in our specific case?
So I think part of it is that, that the plan isn't necessarily what they will do. Because when, or if there is a security issue, the law enforcement is going to do what law enforcement does. And so, and that's always the reality, is once law enforcement shows up, my title of superintendent really means nothing, right? They're there to do their job and do it well. But what they do look at a lot is like the maps of our buildings, where the classrooms are, where the entrances are. So like if we say, we need you at entrance one at the high school, they have that ability to access and know exactly where they're going. Same with like rooms upstairs and knowing from a map where room 211 is from the outside. So that's what's really helpful. And, you know, years ago, that didn't happen. But you think about how large our campus is and how many doors and entrances and everything else, and that's really part of what they have. But in a real, you know, concerning situation, they're going to show up. And, but they also will know like who the contact is. So who's the emergency contact? Who's in charge when they come in? So knowing like principals' names, Brandon Fox's names, all those pieces is also helps streamline if there were to be a situation. And I'll share that we're still working regularly with, especially the Monroe County Sheriff. The Brighton Police are wonderful. Only Indian Landing falls in Brighton, but the Monroe County Sheriff's Office works with us. We meet with them on a regular basis with our behavior intervention teams. They walk our buildings a lot. They have an open invite. They do have key fobs as well, so they can get into our building after hours if there's an emergency and, and during the day, so they can walk the hallways and just be present. And they do that regularly, especially just so deputies can see the building and have an opportunity to look through it. So if and when there's an emergency, it wouldn't be necessarily the first time they're walking into our building.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Krista, a question. So Tom, do, you just mentioned that they have a key fob to come in after hours. I understand that if anything happens. And then you mentioned something about during the day. So they can just show up during the day?
Yes. Yep. So our, our relationship with Monroe County Sheriff and Brighton Police is that if they do come by, they check, they check in at the reception desk.
Okay.
They speak with the building principal, and then they can walk the hallways. It really is a presence piece. It doesn't happen all the time, but Sheriff Baxter has always encouraged the sheriffs to be at buildings. That happened a while back, but even, we don't see it as much, but it was, hey, if you've got to do paperwork, instead of sitting in the Wegmans parking lot, pull into the school parking lot. It's that presence piece. And, and for the most part, it's all, you know, deputies work on shifts, and so it's the day shift folks. It's the folks who, you know, we have interaction with on a regular basis.
Oh, so that's...
But they are able to come into the building and walk through.
Regular. Okay.
It doesn't happen all the time, but we've always had a very open relationship, as all the schools in Monroe County do, about coming in, seeing the building. They're there to just walk. They're not there to, to, to do anything. They're not stepping in to discipline. They're not checking kids' passes if they're late. They're not any of that piece. They're just there to see the building.
Okay. Have you, has there been any feedback about this from staff, administrators, students?
It's been, I could tell you, pretty positive. Our students are amazing with it in terms of those connections. A lot of the deputies are deputies they see because they also live in our community. They have kids that go to our schools. And so they, they're on a first-name basis with them, and that's been very, very helpful. So never been in a concerning piece, and it's really about just being able to see the building and know. We also have the deputies here, which we appreciate. They'll come by during our outdoor sporting events and indoor sporting events. They won't stay the whole time, but if they're out and they don't have a call, we, we invite them in all the time to just be there and be present and be supportive. So it's been, it's been good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Do they just come to the high school?
No, they go to all the buildings.
Okay.
Yep. So Brighton Police will stop into Indian Landing on occasion and walk through. And again, especially when they have new deputies and new police, just making sure that they know what the building is and where it's at and how to access it.
Anyone else? So I just want to say congratulations to all those who received an award and were selected for different things. I think that's an amazing achievement. And so congratulations, Nancy.
Absolutely.
And...
I'll turn over to Dr. Driffl.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Just a couple of things tonight. So one, as Dr. Putnam mentioned, we're going to review the 24-25 draft budget development calendar. If it's to the board's liking, at our next meeting, we'll approve that calendar. And then we have two items for your approval tonight. One is a request for proposal, an RFP for that Atlantic Avenue property we've been talking about the last couple of meetings, that 3021 Atlantic Ave property. And then we also have a couple of change orders on your docket later as well. So first, here's the, the draft over. And this is the time of year where we're, like, the business office is living in three years. We're still auditing the 22-23 year. We're now living amongst the 23-24 year, managing the budget, watching the dollars, but already starting to think about next year, 24-25. So the process really begins in earnest at our December meeting. So we'll review the budget goals, guidelines, and major factors. At that meeting, we'll also review the annual reserve plan. Reserves make up the biggest part of our fund balance. We'll approve that budget GGF in January. On January 23rd, hopefully, the governor will have released her preliminary budget. So we'll release kind of the state aid information and the tentative tax levy calculation. Moving into February, we'll review a full budget draft to know where we stand expenditure-wise, and we'll bring our director, Mr. Gala, to talk about his department, Transportation. In March, that levy calculation formula is due to the state, so we have to send that to the state comptroller and the Department of Tax and Finance. On March 5th, we'll have another budget draft, and we'll do a deep dive on our Buildings and Grounds Department and their associated budget. Our second meeting of March, we'll have an updated budget draft as we approach April. And then at the April 16th meeting, the board is scheduled to adopt the superintendent's proposed budget. This year, the statewide vote and board election is that third Tuesday in May. It's the latest it could possibly be, May 21st. So two weeks before that, as we always do, is the budget hearing on May 7th. So the full documents attached to, to your packet this evening, that kind of shows a little bit more information on who's responsible for what. But that's kind of the high-level budget development calendar for next year's, next year's budget. So I, like the calendar, the proposed RFP and Exhibit A, the purchase contract for the Atlantic Avenue property is in your board docket tonight. So it's public on board docs, everybody can see it and review it. The main tenants really just are around the timeline. That's why I wanted to call that out here. So if the board does approve these terms, as we've proposed, we would make the RFP public tomorrow. So we will notify directly folks that have reached out to us with interest. And then we'll also spread it on, on the website, social media. We'll do a newspaper notice, things like that, just to really get the word out. Proposals would be due a little over a month from now, December 15th. That's a Friday afternoon. And the potential award by the Board of Education is scheduled to be January 9th. So kind of two weeks, or two months, rather, sort of from where we are now. And I think that was all we had for the business updates tonight. Welcome any discussion.
Board members' questions? Nicole?
How much interest has there been?
We've heard directly from a handful of individuals or organizations, and I imagine there'll be more interest once it becomes more publicly known.
Has most of them been residential interest, building houses and stuff? Or...
Yeah, yeah, maybe. Mostly. You know, nobody's really reached out and said, oh, here's my plan exactly. I know who certain people represent. So yeah, I think there's been some of that, and I think maybe there's been some not of that as well. But we'll see.
I think it's a tricky question in a public session, because I don't know the individuals and organizations that have reached out. I don't know, I'm not comfortable sharing this is who. But there are, I can say it's, it's, there are some, I think, an interest for residential homes. There's interest for just the land itself and organizations and what they could do with it. So it's a little bit of all over, all over. But that's why this process, and as Dr. Driffl said, I think, sharing it out as much as we can. If the board approves tonight, then that'll generate more interest. And then ultimately, we'll fall back on the board to review proposals and, and make a decision.
Would that decision just be based on sort of who offers the most, or would there be other things to consider?
So in the RFP terms, there are four considerations. One of them is price, and the board does have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to get the best price. But there's also elements in there around like the solvency of the organization, the public good, anticipated use. So there is some partial discretion, but those kind of hair splittings, we'd have to consult an attorney, obviously. But yeah, there are some elements in the RFP that are not just price.
Board members, other, anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
I believe that concludes superintendent reports.
So we are on 6A. Can I please have a motion in a second that the building emergency response plan amendments described above be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Be it resolved as follows. The Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District hereby finds that the selling, that selling the property by issuing a request for proposals to purchase the property is in the best interest of the district. The Board of Education understands its fiduciary responsibility with respect to such sale and will make any and all further decisions with respect to the sale of such property in accordance with the applicable provisions of law and its fiduciary obligations thereunder. Whereas, the Board of Education seeks to take steps to sell the above referenced property by seeking requests for proposals, any offer to purchase the premises shall be subject to Board of Education approval and the contingencies in a final purchase and sale contract. Can I please have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Yes? Next one is textbook approval. Can I have a motion in a second that the board approves the recommended textbooks as presented on October 17th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? And Monroe County School Board committee meetings? We have the Labor Relations Committee?
So this past Labor Relations meeting, there, there was a presentation that was titled Defending the Virtual Gates. It was all about cybersecurity. It was, as usual, very in-depth, very well presented. You know, it talked about the threats that go on, that go on, the kinds of things going on. And, you know, some of the things that have changed over time, one of the things that you always, you always think about, and you, you know, you're always been told, when you're looking at emails, you think they're suspicious, look for grammatical errors and the like. And they say with AI, they're cleaning all that up. So all those telltale signs that you used to see are going away because of the, the benefits of artificial intelligence making it better. You know, one of the things they pointed out was that, you know, people try to break into a system for a couple of reasons. One of them is ransomware to try to hold our information at risk. And then another one is to try to gather information about, about staff and students. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, kind of got my attention was, you know, what better thing to do is to get a student's identification information so you can create, you can basically, you know, use that for student's identification. They're young, they don't have credit ratings, they don't have any of this stuff, so it's kind of like a clean ID. So they talked about that, and they talked about the kinds of things at the state and the BOCs and the district level that we do to prevent that. So there's a, there's a lot of steps that go in. There's a lot of effort that goes on at the district level, at the BOCs level, and the state level to help make sure that our information is safe. And, and I think that is the most important thing. We are, the important message out of this is we are staying up to date as, as a district, as a Monroe County, of what the threats are. We're keeping our, our defenses up to date, and we're, you know, being constantly vigilant on that. And that's really the most important thing for our district and our families and our kids.
Thank you. NISBA convention? Krista and Nicole?
Do you want to go first? You go first, I'll go second. Well, Tom and Nicole and I were all there, and I don't know, I went last year for the first time. I always think it's great to just be with other board members and just hear different presentations from different districts, just see what other districts are doing. I attended several. I attended one around elevating student voices, which was pretty powerful, from Buffalo. Really, most of it was honestly student presenting, which was pretty awesome. It's nice to see the kids up there and just really talking about their own identity and just reminding that our, us as board members, to make sure that as district, we're doing that, making sure we have an opportunity for our kids to express their own identity. They did mention certain programs that they were using that were interesting, where they had like My Brother's Keeper, which was a six-to-eight kind of mentor program, where it was male scholars. And it was, it was really interesting to hear the young men speak about how, for them, it was just, it was certain kids that either didn't have a father figure or just didn't have a present father in their life, and how it really saved them. So it's just, and now how they're going back and they're now the mentors. So that was really exciting to see the kids kind of turn around and bring it back. Big Sister, Little Sister programs, Scholars for Social Justice, they had a My Sisters' Keeper, they had Global Scholar. So the Buffalo City Schools, I've put a lot of pieces in place for really elevating voices of their students, but also making sure that their kids are, I don't know, being mentored by other children and other positive role models, which was really neat to hear about. We also all attended one around grading, which was really interesting, because we're in the midst of that right now. Some really great information. I know we had debriefed a little bit, talking about doing a board study around just what does that look like, grading for equity. And the speaker was definitely in it. She was powerful. We did talk about how whoever we bring in, we want to make sure that that person will be extremely well-received by all of our stakeholders, if that makes sense. Anything to add on that? No? Okay. I just feel like I'm doing a lot of talking. I also, what'd you say? Also attended one around culture responsive teaching, which was very powerful to watch. It was Eastern Suffolk BOCs, actually, I already reached out to Tasha, just about the work that they're doing and also just the supports that they also offered for other district members that needed it outside of their county. And they spoke about making sure, I talked to the woman one-on-one afterwards, just talking about that support system, that it doesn't necessarily just have to be support people within our own district, but really connecting with other members from other districts that are doing the same kind of work. I went to one on solar panels, because I was thinking about it. I went to one on solar panels, because I was thinking about our land, but it will not work because of the type of land that we have. So that was a no-go. Still that one. Then we also, Nicole and I went to one around SEL, which we found really interesting, because that's a big priority for ours, but it looks a little different, the surveys that they do, where it's really focusing in on specific students and needs of specific students. I think what was most moving about that, in not most positive way, was that the speaker had a child, and she's also the director of this program, whose son had attempted suicide multiple times. So it was really fresh, I think, in many ways, but also real for her. So the work that they're doing was pretty impressive, and... That's kind of what I got. My big takeaways.
I'll just add one thing to what you already shared, the first session with the panel of students from Buffalo City School District. I wish Dr. Potter were here, because I came out of that appreciating so much her work and what we're doing with culturally responsive education. And the programs that Kristen mentioned are after-school programs. I think, I honed it specifically on the one called Our Story, which I think is after-school and then Saturdays, and for high schoolers, and they learn more black hu, well, it was mostly black students, like maybe Hispanic students, but they talked about more black heroes than just the typical three. And, and learning about black history before slavery, so African history before slavery, like we, Africa had kingdoms and was rich and prosperous and powerful. So, and how important that was to realize that their history didn't start with slavery. And I just, and they just talked about identity development, like, "This helped me to know who I am, that I'm not a descendant of slaves, I'm a descendant of Africans." And, and it struck me how majority students have this by default, like don't realize what they have, that from preschool on up, you're surrounded by heroes that look like you, and this kind of identity, and this kind of grounding, and this kind of self-esteem that minorities, students don't have. And it just made me, I appreciate that we're, that we're working on it, and made me sort of want to put the pedal to the metal a little bit and just, and do more of that, which is how important for identity. I thought of, actually, I thought of my husband, who's Jamaican, and how, you know, he, growing up in Jamaica, everybody he learned about was black, and how grounded he is in his identity. And that's what white students have here. And, but there's so many other non-white students that need that. So just how powerful it is, and just to hear these students talk about how life-changing because how grounding it was for them. It made me wish that it wasn't just an after-school and Saturday program, that it was more part of everyday school curriculum.
And I thought, one of the interesting things that they mentioned that they did is they have partnerships with community members, so it would be, the kids would be paired with other people that they could identify with in different successful positions, whether it was like in the medical field or in an engineer field, so they could, like local partnerships, which I think is really, I know that's a big push of ours, is really those partnerships, but maybe looking outside of Penfield and even just in our larger community and tapping into those relationships that we have to be giving kids those, you know, other mentors, so they can see what it's like. And it's a great opportunity, because I know, I have a senior, "What do you want to do? I don't know, math." Okay, that's a big field, and I know you don't want to teach, so like, we got to narrow that down, but he has like no clue, but that would be, give kids an opportunity to just, even just get their feet wet in a field and see what it's like, like, "Yeah, no, I'm not going, that doesn't interest me," or, "Yeah, that does interest me," and, "Oh, wow, I can see someone, you know, that looks like me doing this."
Yeah. Yeah, one of the kids talked with so much excitement about going to the wastewater plant, and just like how nasty the water is before it was worked on, and, but it's chemistry, it's, you know, it's science that takes that water and makes it drinkable. Yeah, and just how exciting that was for him to see that.
That's cool.
Talk about more interesting than reading a chemistry textbook.
Right. It's real-life application of what you're learning in school.
I enjoyed just being with our incredible Board members, so, but I think everything you said was great. I think it's, whenever you go to a conference like this, it's the, you hear the passion in your voice from what you heard, and that was really, really powerful. But I'm losing my voice a little bit, so you're all lucky, I won't talk anymore.
Didn't mean to choke you up, Tom.
No, sorry. It was really, they had goats. Remember, that was really the fun part.
They did have goats.
They had goats, they were raffling off a tractor. So it's a reminder sometimes of how big our state is, right? So, you know, I took pictures of the goats and sent them to my kids and said, "I'm going to bring one of these home." So they were all very excited, but there's nowhere to keep a goat in my Penfield house.
You don't have to mow.
So, but it was really, it was a good, I was disappointed, the only disappointment I had was there wasn't a keynote. It wasn't really, that's, and some of the conventions we've been to for NISBA, they brought in some amazing keynote speakers, and this was, felt a little smaller, but...
It did feel smaller.
Yep.
It was nice that you didn't have to leave the building, though, I will say that, because last year, we had to leave to go to different buildings, and that was a little confusing for a first-timer last year. This year, I was ready for it. I'm like, "Oh, I only have to go this way or that way, and that's it."
It did work out. I got, I went to the law conference the day before, or the first day, which was really a lot of just legal stuff from the state. They had people, attorneys from New York State Education there as well, but that was fun to be there, because that evening also was the Buffalo Bills game. So I stayed in my hotel, but got to see the wildness of downtown Buffalo for a Bills game. But the legal conference, again, a lot of just those changes that, and a lot of it wasn't new because of the Monroe County School Board legal seminar that they hold as well, but it's still important to hear what's coming and what's changing from Albany. All right.
Okay, any, no unfinished business, any new business? No? Okay. Okay. Well, once my computer pulls it up. Can I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:17 PM?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?